Okay, seven o'clock now. We can go ahead and get started. Um, I'm gonna skip my whole spiel because we have a not many people. I think everybody knows they're here for it. Um, we have a roll call, please.
Trustee Marcus.
Here.
Trustee Weekly.
Right here.
Trustee McAvoy.
Present.
Vice President Wells.
Here.
President Lawson.
Here. Changes to the agenda? You have a motion to approve it?
I move we approve the agenda.
There's a second? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, thank you. Um, we do not have any oral communication tonight. Evelyn, you can, okay. Um, so we'll go right into six point one, the health and wellness report.
We have our Director of Wellness coming up with two of her associates, our R, two of our RNs, that are going to give the presentation this evening. So, Patrina, I'll turn it over to you. Is someone going to do the slides for her? You'll see it. Oh, she did push. Yeah, that's exactly what it is. And around and around.
Everything good now?
Yes.
All right.
Yes.
All right. So, good evening, Board of Trustees, Dr. Baker, Cabinet Members. Um, I want to send a, a welcome from the Health and Wellness Team. I'm Patrina Redd. I'm the Director of Health and Wellness. And with me tonight, I have my two lead nurses, Lisa Cox and Phoebe Ree Chambers. And we will be presenting on the Health and Wellness Department. Okay, so our first screen goes over and it shows you our full team. Here in Redwood City, we have four RNs, two of our RNs are lead nurses. And we also have quite a few LVNs. They're starting to come on board as district hires. So, we have three one-to-one LVNs who work with our special needs students. And we have three office LVNs. The goals for our department are listed here. Um, our main focus this year is to engage teacher, parents, students, and the community in promoting health-enhancing behaviors. We're using data to make necessary modifications and use best practices to cultivate and expand our program. And then we want to also increase family and community involvement at each of our school sites. So, the first thing that I want to discuss is engaging teachers or more so engaging staff, both classified and certificated staff. This year, funded by the Sequoia Healthcare District, we have a new staff wellness program for both certificated and classified and management staff, anybody that wants to join. And the purpose of this program is to promote, uh, overall well-being for our staff as well as to reduce stress. You guys okay? And it's a ten-week-long course where the teams meet weekly and they meet online via Zoom. And they are working on the ten components listed in the picture. We started, um, having meetings early in the spring where we advertised. They attended info sessions. And at the end of September is when we first started, uh, our first sessions. And it is, um, once again funded by the Sequoia Healthcare District at no cost to our staff. To engage parents, the Sequoia Healthcare District also funds parenting classes through the Parent Venture. The green section shows all of the courses that were offered last year in their Parent Education Series. It shows the amount of attendees that, um, attended each event and also shows how many people viewed the recordings after the live session. The very last session was funded through Redwood City Together. They also wanted to promote, uh, more exposure to parents on parent education. And so, a course was offered in Spanish, uh, at our Hoover site. For the twenty-four, twenty-five school year, we started off with two classes. One was on fentanyl and the other is, um, on executive functioning. We are still determining the classes for the spring. But Redwood City Together has committed to provide extra funding to continue to support the mission and offer more classes through Parent Venture. So, I would say around September, I did a survey to our parent community to find out what type of courses, what they like to, uh, receive parent education on. And here are the courses, um, that they responded. Most, as most of you guys could see, mental health was the top priority for our families as well as internet safety and academics. As part of the SB HIP grant, Daybreak is offering family counseling virtual to our families in the district. And in addition to the family counseling, they're also offering six sessions of, they're more like parenting classes versus, um, the Parent Education Series. So, they, they, they defer a little bit different from Parent Venture as they go a little bit deeper. And the topics that they, um, are discussing are based off of what Anna Paula, who is our lead mental health counselor, she presented, um, I believe last month, on what our needs of our students are. And so, we tried to tailor the, the parent survey along with the needs of, uh, what our parents was requesting. And we came up with the courses, uh, listed here. So, November fourth will be our first class. It will be offered both in English and Spanish, and it'll also be offered online. And then also finally, um, regarding our students and engaging them, the new change this year is that we continue, we are continuing to offer health education, but it is being offered internally. So, what that means is that our puberty talk for fifth grade students and our teen talk for seventh grade students will be, and are adapted for all ability, uh, will be taught by Artosa and Lucero. Our nurses were also trained in the curriculum as well. And the reason for this change is because Health Connected, uh, had a, a cost increase of more than fifty percent. And we just figured it would be best to serve our students internally. And we were, be able to still be trained and host the same curriculum for our students, but do it with our staff. And then we also have volunteer medical students through Stanford that will also be helping to co-teach some of our classes and help facilitate the classes. So, puberty talk started, um, last week. And, uh, we'll go throughout the fall and then we'll start our teen talk probably around December, early January. The chart here just is some data that I got from Health Connected showing how many participants, uh, participated, how many students participated in puberty talk, teen talk, middle school, and adapted for all abilities. And it also shows the opt-outs, um, that we had of parents that did not want their children to participate for last year's school year. So, I'll have this year's school, this year's school year's data at the end of this year. All right. So, now I have my nurses here that will come and present on services and RCSD.
Hello. I'm Lisa Cox, one of the lead RNs.
I'm Phoebe Ree Chambers, other lead RN.
Right. I can't see that. So, I'm gonna look at this. I don't have my other glasses. So, one of the things that us as nurses in our districts do, or I should say in this district, at our school sites, is that we do California State mandated hearing and vision. This is done starting with our TKers and Kinders as they come in. So, we get a baseline of what their eyes look like. We also do second grade, we do fifth grade, and we do eighth grade at all our school sites. We also do students that have IEPs, um, and any staff requests. So, we were at Hoover on Monday and the vice principal brought us two students that had a problem in class and we screened them. And yes, they can't see. And so, that's where referrals will go out. So, it's a really good program that we do, required by the state. Um, vision is done by the district nurses at all the school sites. And when we are doing them, all four RNs, we're certified to do this, go to the sites together and do it together. Um, we screen using visual acuity where they're ten feet away and there's a chart and we have to get them down to, we try to get them to twenty-twenty, but if we can't, we have to get them at least to thirty-two, thirty-two. This year, we started, um, we were able to borrow, San Mateo County bought a spot screener and we were able to do spot screening, which was fantastic because our TKers, their eyes are still developing. They usually don't pass near vision and they were passing with a spot screener. So, it was great to see that it's working and we were using that to, this year, um, at some of our school sites. Uh, kiddos that don't know letters, um, like our TKers, we use the Sloan chart symbols to help, um, with our screening. And then in the spring, we do color vision for male students only in first grade. And then with the hearing, we, um, work with Hearing Conservation Associates to come in and do hearing at all our school sites for the same grades. Did I do that right? Which arrow? It's not going. So, these are the results from our hearing and vision from twenty-twenty-three. Um, with hearing, we screened two hundred, two thousand nine hundred and nine students. Eighty-six didn't pass and we sent out eighty-six referrals. The vision screening, we did two thousand four hundred and ninety-three students. Three hundred and twenty-four didn't pass and we sent out three hundred and twenty-four referrals. The big difference between those two was that we also had three school sites that Vision to Learn came and screened the entire school. These are just the grades that I mentioned, TK through K, second, fifth. So, there's the difference in the numbers of who was screened because the next slide will show you how many students Vision to Learn screened with their vision screening. Special Ed also sends us requests throughout the year to do vision and hearing. So, we also, on top of the state mandated, did five hundred-plus individual students vision and hearing for IEP meetings. In the spring, we did three hundred and fifty-one male students. Sixteen did not pass. We do not send referrals out for that because there is no treatment for color vision deficiency. It's basically you have it and we let teachers know so that they don't use the colors that we screen for in their educational aids. This year, we're in the process of doing our, uh, vision screening right now. We still have three sites that we are going to be doing for the rest, the next two weeks. And then hearing will start at the beginning of November, November. And those are the dates that we, um, are going to be doing. So, all of that is in progress right now. And then this is Vision to Learn.
Right. And I'll go over Vision to Learn. So, Vision to Learn is a nonprofit organization that Redwood City School District, we've partnered with. And they've been in our district for a few years now. Um, what they do is they provide free vision services to Title I schools. And it's every two years. Um, they do an initial screen-in. And for students who don't pass that initial screen-in, they bring in a mobile van, a clinic. And the clinic is serviced by an optician and optometrist. And those students who did not pass the initial screen and get a follow-up exam, and if they need glasses, they get glasses also for free. Um, if you look at these numbers, last year, they screened, they were at three school sites, Hoover, Taft, and McKinley. And at Hoover, they did five hundred and eighty-five students. They screened. A hundred and sixty-eight didn't pass. Total students who got follow-up exams were a hundred and seventy-one. Thirty were unable to be examined and glasses dispensed was a hundred and forty-one. Taft, total screen, three fourteen. Those who didn't pass, seventy-eight. Seventy-eight were examined. Fifty-eight received glasses. McKinley, three eighty-seven got screened. A hundred and thirty didn't pass. Total who got follow-up exams, one oh eight. Twenty-two were unable to be examined and ninety-four got glasses. And I just want to go over quickly that sometimes, well, as you can see, the numbers don't match up with who didn't pass in total examined or unable to exam. Um, and that's because sometimes, as Lisa explained, students who might have been absent for the initial exam for, at Hoover, especially that hundred and seventy-one, three kids were absent. And when the van was there, they got an eye, an eye exam. And sometimes students are, like our students in special ed or RLC classes, um, they just won't go in the van. So, they don't get screened. They, for some rea, some kids are claustrophobic or they're just afraid. So, they don't get screened at that time. All right. And these are our numbers for this year for Vision to Learn. They're at two school sites this year, Garfield and Roosevelt. And Roosevelt, they're still in process of doing the follow-up exams. All right. Immunizations, very important for school nursing and public health. Um, so the school nursing team and the registration team have collaborated the last two years to try to improve our numbers. And we've definitely seen an improvement when we work together. So, the registration team, what they've been doing is making sure that all students who register are up to date. We do have a few students who, like students who are McKinney-Vento Act or students in foster care, that if they don't, if they're not up to date, they can still register and start school. But they still need to meet the requirements. Um, and we've also partnered with Stanford Teen Van this year to help our seventh graders get, meet the seventh grade requirements. And so, if you look at our numbers, last year, TKK, they, we had like thirty-two students who were missing immunizations at the beginning of the school year. Seventh graders, eighty-one. This year, TK went down a little bit, tiny bit, thirty-one, um, seventh graders, twenty-four. And we had thirty-four students utilize the services that the Stanford Teen Van provided. We had vaccination clinic at Kennedy in the spring and then at MIT in the summer. Um, and so, just to make note that for TK and Kinder, sometimes they can be conditional admission. That means they've met the requirements but still need a couple more doses. And they don't, those doses, they are not going to get when school starts. So, they can start school without full vaccination. And that's our, thanks for letting us present to you guys tonight. And we are open to questions.
For the presentation?
Okay. All right. Stand by. Yes.
Okay. So, other services that we offer in the district, um, as you guys have heard for the past three years, is dental screenings through Sunrisers Dental that's funded through the Sequoia Healthcare District and Dignity Health. They provide screening for our preschool and TK and kindergartner students. And this is a visual inspection of whether or not a student has act, active DK or, um, cavities. It is consent, uh, excuse me, it's opt-out only. So, if a parent does not want their child to participate, they would just turn in the form when they get the flyer saying that dental screening is coming to their school. And so, for last year's school year, there were nine hundred and twenty-eight students that were screened. And as you can look at the numbers below, you can see the numbers of students with active DK, thirty-nine percent. Um, we had fifty-five percent students, which is a little bit more than half, with no dental problems. But that's still way off. And so, um, we need to make sure that we're able to, um, make a difference with these students. And by getting treatment early, hopefully, we could prevent them from getting the active DK. And then this is just, uh, another, uh, screening charts to the left. It's just a chart that shows the number of no DK. So, that was three hundred and sixty-one students, uh, with no DK. It's a little blurry. And five hundred and sixty students, um, excuse me, five hundred and sixty-seven with no DK and three hundred and sixty-one with active DK. So, that's quite a few students. Um, the class one students are the students that have no issue. Um, class two students are in the yellow, are students that have, um, some urgent needs. And class three students are, they need to see a dentist right away. So, they need emergency care. On the right-hand side of the chart, it shows all of the schools that were screened. So, they screened students at the CDC as well as the school site. So, if you're just looking at the chart, as you can see, the highest, uh, number of active DK for last year's school year was at Garfield CDC, which we had sixty percent of our students there, um, with active, active DK. And so, things that we notice is that, um, the students do have a lot of DK. Um, earlier on in preschool, they start to lose some of their baby teeth. And so, when there's screening that takes place at the elementary level, some of those teeth have fell out. So, um, those may not count in the active DK rate because they have the adult teeth. However, if a student does not receive any treatment, it, it's still going to be counted that following year. And oftentimes, we see from one year to another that students are not getting treated. So, the data trends, um, show during twenty-one, twenty-two, the focus was really just on our pre-K students. And so, we only screened about four hundred and forty-six students. I don't know why twenty-three, twenty-four didn't come up. Um, but for the twenty-two, twenty-three year, we had nine hundred and thirty-nine. And I believe for twenty-three, twenty-four, we had nine hundred and twenty-eight. So, it was just a little bit less that following year. But as you can see, there's still, um, you know, a lot of active DK, a lot of noticeable dental problem, at least more than half of the students for, uh, last year's school year had a lot of, uh, noticeable DK. And we still have quite a few with non-urgent, but still, it's a lot of students with noticeable DK. And so, as a result of that, last year, I had a request from Board, uh, Trustee Weekly about a dental sealant program. And so, at that time, San Mateo County said, we're about three to four years out with doing a dental sealant program. So, you know, check back with us later. Um, sent them an email saying, oh, it's not, it's a no-go. I got a call this spring saying, hey, we found an agency out of Southern California that is, uh, willing to, you know, move and, and do work in, uh, Redwood City. And since Sunrisers had been very active in our district, um, that they decided to work with our district. The dental clinic is called Jerry Smiles. They're two, a mobile clinic. And so, we are in the works right now. Uh, so, it's on the radar. We're hoping to pilot a few school sites. The goal is that they will actually be screening first through eighth grade students. So, um, all of our students will be taken care of, uh, for when we get to them. But we're going to look at those high priority sites for this school year to get treated. And then we'll branch out, um, for next year's school year. This does require an active consent form because it is a procedure that's being done to a student's, uh, tooth or teeth. Okay. So, in addition, the Health and Wellness also works with subs abuse prevention programs. And so, there's three programs that we're currently working with in the district. The first one is TUPI, which is, um, it's, it's, we're under the consortium of the San Mateo County Office of Education. Uh, they received a three-year grant and within that grant, we are under their umbrella uh, to provide a six-leçon curriculum to middle school age students. So, primarily seventh and eighth grade students. And the curriculum is through the Stanford Toolkit called U and Me Together Vape Free. And then also, we have to administer the California Healthy Kids Survey. And last year's school year was our first year. Um, Redwood City School District has in previous years, um, administered the California Healthy Kids Survey, but the grant ran out. So, it wasn't required any longer. Um, we started this back up last year and we will be continuing that, um, even with this year. But it's required every other year. So, for the twenty-three, twenty-four school year, TUPI was offered at Kennedy, Hoover, MIT, Roy Cloud, and Garfield. Um, it is based on whichever sites we can find, uh, a site coordinator. No matter what, we will still administer the California Healthy Kids Survey, um, if there is a middle school component. But if, um, but for, for the TUPI program, in order for it to run, we have to have a site lead. And so, this year, uh, so far, we've had identified staff at Kennedy, Hoover, MIT, NSA, and Clifford that will be, um, the site coordinators. And any other school that has a middle school component is in the works of finding a coordinator. We also are working with Hawaii Vape, which is out of UC San Diego. And they provide alternative means to suspension. And so, it is an online program where students do the curriculum online if they are caught vaping or using tobacco at school. And this program offers coaching and it also allows for parent participation. Uh, last year, only three referrals were made and one of the three referrals were successfully completed. So, we're hoping that this school year, that this will be, um, an option for schools to use as an alternative, uh, to suspension when a student is caught. Hopefully, it will eliminate, um, students from vaping altogether. But if they are caught, this is, uh, one of the options that they can choose. In addition to that, Sequoia Healthcare District also funds another program called L-Central Libertad. And they focus on drug prevention as well. Um, they are at four of our school sites, Kennedy, Hoover, Garfield, and McKinley. Um, as you can see, the top numbers are the unduplicated students per site. And what unduplicated means in this sense are students that are caught vaping. They're only counted once. So, if a student is caught multiple times, um, they're not counted in this number. Everybody participates in a group. Um, about eighty-five percent of those students, um, they attended the session. And then, um, there were eleven students from various school sites that required additional support. And so, they were referred to the outpatient program. And you can see the numbers here listed for, um, how many sessions were conducted per school sites. The referrals are coming from either the family center or from the principals. And for the students that, fifteen percent of the students that did not attend or complete the first cohort, they were referred to the second cohort. And parents are, uh, required to give permission for their students to participate. Through our LCAP, we have behavioral support. And so, what this means is that we have a board-certified behavior analyst that is, um, providing behavioral support to teachers as well as to individual students. Um, I have data for the twenty-three, twenty-four school year as well as current data as of right now. So, last year, we had sixty-one, uh, referrals. And to date, what, are we about two months into school? We have twenty-six referrals. So, the number is definitely trending on the high end. And I'm anticipating almost a hundred referrals, um, by the end of the school year. This is for tier-two support. So, one of the ways that we're trying to slow down the referrals is making sure that our school sites are offering tier-one support for our kiddos before making the referral. And then, um, if those tier-one supports are not working, then we refer them to, um, support for our BCBA. And then also, we are trying to increase community involvement at each school site. So, one of the events that we did, which is in the left-hand corner, was a Career Day event at Kennedy. The Women's Day event is what I have a picture of because that's what I was kind of helping out with. And so, this was one of our women in the trade industry doing a presentation on how our students can get into the trade industry. We're also doing some collaboration with our family centers. So, whenever there are parent presentations, we're looking to work with our, um, our family centers in engaging our parents by having our parents come in and view the webinars at the school sites and having discussions with them. So, that way, they can get a deeper understanding of the information that's being presented because we all know that our parents don't always access, um, webinars or online classes. And then also, um, whenever we are, uh, referring students to medical services for urgent care, we follow up with our community schools for additional support. And then we also have a new admin, um, uh, admin secretary. And then we also have a new admin, admin secretary in our registration department, who also is supporting the work of our nurses that they can bring referrals to connect with parents for additional follow-up services. If they need like extra dental screenings or hearing, places to go to get their hearing checked. The middle, the middle picture is food tasting event. We partnered with UCC as well as San Mateo County to do food tasting events. So that was at Open House at Kennedy in the spring. And then also, we will continue to have our Health and Wellness Committee. And that was one of our end-of-the-year activity. I tried to snag a picture before everybody left. And so one of the new components of the Health and Wellness Committee is that we will have students participate on the committee to give their advice on what's important for them and their classmates as it relates to health and wellness. And as you can see, these are all of the different things that the Sequoia Healthcare contributes to. We can not do the work without their contribution. So this is the different areas that they help support and the funding that goes towards it. This is a bigger slide that breaks down the different areas. So this year, we have about two hundred thousand dollars more in funding from the Sequoia Healthcare District than we have had in the previous years. They continue to support pretty much the same staffing, counseling, parent education. And then the additional fundings come with the community partners that apply for grants specifically to serve our students. And so our, their total contribution is over one point nine million for this school year. Lastly, I just want to thank Janet Lawson, Janet Lawson and Alyssa McAvoy for serving on the Health and Wellness Committee. Since I started, they kind of helped guide me, help with suggestions as well as, thank you, Lisa, help with, come up with suggestions. And so you guys have been my ride or die. So thank you for being a part. Yes. And so just thank you. Any questions? A little decoration. All right. So that's the end of our presentation. So do you have any questions for us?
Thank you so much. That was very thoughtful. I'll open up to the board for comments or questions.
Thanks again for the presentation and for everything that you guys and the team does for our students. My question is, when we do those screening, are all students being screened? Or do we like prioritize the unduplicated pupils and then move on with the other students? Or is that just for every student in the district?
For the hearing and the vision?
Yes.
So we screen the state mandated and then we screen students that we get the referrals throughout the year. So the five hundred plus that counselors, case managers, they send to us. And those are all the other grades. The Vision to Learn, they screened the entire school. So those numbers, they screen every grade. And then those that don't pass the screening, go in and get their exam. So we only screen the state mandated grades unless otherwise asked.
Right. And keep in mind, state mandated grade, it's TK, second grade, fifth grade, and eighth grade.
So it's half the school, basically. If you're K eight, it's half your school.
Great. Thank you. And then my comment regarding the sealants. Thank you, David, for the comment last year. As I was talking to Dr. Baker during our one-on-one, I was like, hey, I was reading the agenda. And that is so awesome. I mean, I remember if you opt to put a sealant on your child's teeth. I mean, I remember paying for my kids like seventy-five dollars per teeth, you know? So that's like awesome. So, so thank you for the partnership for actually listening to the board member and following up with somebody to do something for our district. So thank you so much for, for that. And then again, thank you for the family involvement and what you guys are doing, obviously, because that's how we want to start with the parents' involvement so that they can support our students. So thank you so much for everything. And that's it for me.
Thank you so much. Wow, that made my night. I'm, I'm listening to you. It is a nice feeling. And yeah, it's, it's exciting that I, I, I expect that in the coming years, we're going to see the outcomes of those programs leading to much better dental health. So like, that's, that's super duper exciting. I have, I have a whole bunch of questions. I'll try and be quick with it. First slide, members of the general public may not be familiar with the difference between an LVN and an RN versus an RN lead. I'm wondering if you could give us folks like a thirty-second education as to what those are.
All right. So LVN is a vocational nurse. And they just go to, they do a program that's just strictly focused on like the skills. RN, it's a four-year degree. They have a BSN. And what was the other one?
Oh, and lead.
So Lisa and I, we supervise the nursing team under the tutelage of Katrina.
Phoebe and I also have our masters in nursing. So that's also where we're one up from the RNs. And one of the four-year degree, well, the extra education, I should say.
That's fantastic. Thank you.
The levels of education.
Thank you. Based on the data that you have here, and I really do love the rich data, what would you say is unusual about our district's health? Like if we were to compare this for, you know, other similar districts? And, and trend lines as well? I did appreciate the, the graphs that show some of these things trending. But like, what are the big tells from this that, that you see?
I think, I think for us is that we need to handhold and give a little bit more support and outreach to our families to let them know where to access these resources from. Some, some families automatically get it. They have their own dentist and they, they don't need what we offer here at the school district. But there's some families, especially those that are new to the country, new to our district, that need to learn how to navigate the system and to provide support. So unlike some of our neighboring school district, we have many of those families. And so that's why the admin assistant and the family centers are so important. Because in addition to our nurse outreach, they can help guide the families to the resources that they need to get the support for their children.
Makes sense. I, I did notice that on the attendance for the different parental classes, that the, the Spanish one had markedly lower attendance. Is there more that we could be doing to go and connect with that community to help them navigate the resources that are available to them?
Yes. So the grant got approved, I would say, at the beginning of May. So we didn't have a lot of time to get the class together, but we still wanted to hold the class before the end of the school year. We know now that the grant is going to be moving forward. So yes, we will be outreaching a little more toughly. And then also, like I said, bringing in our family centers to kind of give that extra phone call to families that need that extra support. Because we do want to see the numbers of our parents increase, especially our Spanish-speaking families, to make sure. Because some of the classes are specifically for any type of concerns that may have come up through our community centers or through outreach. And so we are trying to address those issues. So we just need to make sure we do that extra outreach to get them to attend. And we're trying, we're trying different things. We're trying online. We're trying in person. And so that was one that was in person. And that's the first one that's been in person since I've started in the district. So even though it was a low turnout, it was still a good amount of parents that attended the workshop for the first time.
Cool. Thank you. I really liked seeing the data about number of students screened, number where we found something, the referrals. Do we continue that investigation further as to whether or not the student actually was able to find and connect with those services and got the treatment they needed? Whether, you know, I saw some data about glasses, but there was also a comment on the dentistry front that maybe not all those students who were found to need dental help actually got it. Do we, do we have any outcome data?
So we, we do, but just very little. And it's only what parents report back to us. And so that's where we need to weave into the community centers and the admin assistant to, to do some follow-up calls to make sure that the families are receiving the services that are in need. But then also, we'll be able to track it with the dental because we will be able to track how many students got the approval from their parents in order to get the dental sealants. And they will also be doing cleaning along with the sealants. And they will also check for cavities. And so that's not something that usually our older students are getting. So, you know, they're just screened one time in preschool, a couple of times, preschool TK and Kinder. But then after that, they just kind of go off into the abyss. And now we'll be able to really see if the students get the services through Jerry Smiles or, you know, whatever agency. Because Jerry Smiles will also notify parents if there's a need and parents can still choose to go to their own provider. And so we'll be able to track that data because it's a question of the form.
In terms of vision, it would seem that like the teacher can tell whether a student is wearing glasses and might be able to ask if they're wearing contacts. And so we, we in theory should be able to track if a student is known to have vision deficiencies that are not actually being corrected in the classroom. Do, do we track that? Is that something we're looking at?
We don't track if, but sometimes the teachers do let us know. Student A has glasses but never wears them. So then we'll follow up with parents. Sometimes it's just that student might have lost glass, the glasses, or they're broken and the student, the parents don't have a way to get new ones. So we're actually trying to work on finding other resources outside of Vision to Learn. Because they only go to the Title I schools. So if there are students at the other schools that need services, then there is a gap. But we had a program, VSP, and vouchers. But as of November fourth, they're discontinuing their vouchers. So we're, yeah, in the process of trying to find a new partner.
That's a bummer. I mean, I, I think for vision, because it's so much clearer and easier to inspect whether or not vision remediation is taking place versus like doing regular dental inspection, say, is a very different bar.
Right.
That would be a nice thing for us to be able to track. And the reason why I'm hoping at it, just if there are people who are curious, like, why, why does he care about glasses? We, we know from the research that students who have uncorrected vision deficiencies disproportionately struggle with classroom instruction and with reading. And it's, it's relatively speaking, a simple fix. And so it's just, I really want to make sure that we give every kid the best possible chance to get an education, which means them being able to actually see their educational material. And so I guess this is a request for the district as much as anything that we, that we start looking at that and that I would love to explore with you. We can get access to some more of these resources that actually can provide glasses for kids who've demonstrated the need for them. Awesome. In, in terms of the immunization requirements, I believe I know the answer to this question, but I'm just going to ask it anyhow. Are, are COVID vaccines required as part of the required immunization schedule?
No.
Didn't think so. Thank you. Just not everyone is, is clear on that. And in terms of the puberty talk curriculum, can parents review the curriculum before deciding whether or not to opt out?
Yes. So we did have a parent night for puberty talk where they were able to review a presentation that was led by Ann Lucero. And then we also have a hard copy of the curriculum here at the reg, the, this is the front desk that parents could come in. And we actually have had parents come in to review the curriculum. We can't post it online because of copyright laws, but they are able to come in.
Cool. I, I, I was able to see some pretty awesome news that the FDA put out like just this month on findings on youth tobacco, showed, showed actually really significant declines from this school year from last year around vaping and e-cigarette use. So it seems like programs like this are working even at a national scale to reduce teenage use of cigarettes and other nicotine products. So I thought that was pretty fantastic and thought I would share that with the group. Cool. Last question. I swear I'm done now. If you could just change anything about what the district is doing to make for healthier children, what would you change about our approach?
I would say just being, being able to connect with more partners and more giving partners to fund some of these areas that we're lacking in. I oftentimes, my other half is the Sequoia Healthcare District. So in areas like where the vision is no longer being taken care of, I always bring it back to them because taxpayer dollars are funding what the Sequoia Healthcare District distributes to our school district. And so we are looking at it in other areas. But, you know, I just would hope that, you know, through partnerships and communication and being on all of these committees, we're able to get that, that backup support that we need.
Thank you.
Thanks. All right. Thank you so much for the presentation. This was really wonderful. And I think it goes to show what a safety net this school district is, particularly for those families and students that are school-dependent. I mean, these are such important areas of health and go directly to academics, right? So anyway, just thank you for all you're doing. And please thank all the other nurses and other staff, you know, counselors. I mean, there's lots of people that are involved in this. So first of all, thank you. And then I also want to say, thank you very much for recognizing us on the Wellness Committee. And I was actually going tonight to say that both Janet and I have been serving on that committee. Well, I've been on it, I think, since it began. So however long that was, that was like, I've had multiple wellness coordinators. And then you, I think, your whole time. So anyway, it's an opportunity for the three of you and the two of you to think about who's going to join. It's actually excellent. You get to work with Patrina. You get to work on wellness for our students and our staff. And it's not a big lift. We meet, I was trying to think, is it quarterly now or bimonthly?
Yeah, we're meeting three times a year.
Only three times. We used to meet monthly, by the way, so.
Yes, and that was overkill. So we figured we could still do the same job and get the same work done in in-between time. If there was something that needed to be communicated out, I could just do it via email. And so our first meeting will be coming up on November seventh. And like I said, I'm having now a group of students that will, when are you guys leaving?
December seventeenth, so we can be at the first one.
So you'll get to see that new transition.
That's great. So what I was going to say is, one thing that's great about this committee is it does have a lot of our partners and providers who come to it. So for example, if you have a real interest in certain areas, it's an opportunity to share that. And it's got a lot of the players there. And if they're not there, they know other people. So it's a really, it's a great coordination and collaboration in wellness. So anyway, just a plug on that. And then I, I also wanted just to do a huge shout out to the Sequoia Healthcare District. And like you said, I mean, it's taxpayer money that's going to them to be distributed for healthcare. But I do think that we're getting, you know, year over year, we're getting quite a bit of money to really support what we do. And we couldn't do it without them. I mean, you know, when, did you say a million? One, one point nine for this next year, for this school year. And, you know, we've been getting a lot of money year over year over year. So it's, it's a huge plus. And so just for any community members who don't know that, we're grateful. Okay, so I did have just a few kind of questions. So I was wondering how many employees, if you know, otherwise you can get back to me, are taking advantage of that staff wellness program?
We have twenty.
Twenty, okay.
So for the first cohort, there's twenty.
Okay. And I'm sure as the word gets out, how awesome it is, more will join. But I just think that's great. I mean, I think our staff can only be as kind of present and available as they are healthy. So I'm such a firm believer in that. And I know another thing you didn't talk about is you did get a discount at the Kenyatta College. Yeah, to the gym. So if you don't know, and I'm announcing it, I know you know, because I've seen you. Evelyn is there and I actually am there. But, you know, the, all the employees get a fifty percent discount, I believe, in, in the health club there. So anyway, so thank you, the one who followed up. I just made the connection, I think. So anyway, thank you for doing that. So that's great. On the parent venture education, and then also the parent at the Daybreak Health, I saw there's video recordings. And I'm wondering, are we, are other, like, are any of our parents able to access those?
Anybody.
Anybody can. So I, okay, so when I was a parent, I went to a lot of these and I've still gone to some of them as a school board member, but I think they're excellent. And as we do more of them in Spanish, and we have ones in English, I was thinking, maybe there's an opportunity to showcase those at some of the schools, like at parent nights or cafecitos or whatever. And also just to push them out a little bit more because it's sort of like us watching a webinar, professional development webinar, but it's a professional development on a parent education. And if they're already recorded and they're really, they have experts that are, are part of those presentations. They're really good. So anyway, I'm a huge advocate of that. And I do think there's opportunities for the numbers to grow when I look at those numbers. And I realize not everyone can make it live. And I realize not everyone can make it live, but if we have the video recordings, maybe there's an opportunity to do more. And anyway, so that's just a plug on that.
And, and just let me say that that's only the people that report where they're from. There's many more than Julie, but those are the only the people that they capture that put that they're from Redwood City.
Okay, there's definitely more than, yeah, yeah, that's great. Okay. Um. I had some of the same. Oh, okay. On tooth decay, I'm wondering, are we doing more on kind of nutrition? And protection of teeth, like before we get to cavities, because it's sort of alarming when you see, and I, and I know the research and the data and stuff out there that some of our families, the kids are having really heavy sugar juices and you know, things like that early on. But to have cavities at three, four, five, I mean, that's so young. And so I was thinking maybe with our partners, we need to connect up with them. I just feel like there's more parent education that needs to happen to prevent the need for all of this.
So Sunrisa does uh, they do a um, like a dental presentation with the students. And so yes, we do need to get to um, the parent level. We did a, uh, access to healthcare that more so went over our services. And that's something that I've discussed with the nurses is just coming up with different topics for parents because one of the um, survey results came in and it was on health or nutrition. So looking at those specific topics, we have had our nurse go in uh, with some of our partners and do presentation on particular requests. And so yes, it, it needs, but we just need more parent participation. Cause sometimes we offer it, but we need to grow our numbers with our parents attending.
Yeah. Yeah. And then maybe, you know, through our preschools, there's an opportunity. I know like with PE plus, we're doing some nutrition and some wellness, but maybe, I don't know, maybe there's an opportunity to get them earlier because obviously if we can prevent it to begin with, it would be amazing. So anyway, just want to put in a plug for that. If there's anything more and you know, through Redwood City Together, we've got Kaiser, we've got some of the other healthcare. Maybe we need to let, you know, I, I, I can let the people there know that maybe there's more they could do too. Um, okay. Another, sorry, I, this was such an awesome presentation. There was so much in it that. So I was curious on the site coordinators for toupee, who, who, like what sort of person is a site coordinator? Is that a teacher, a principal, a parent?
Um, it could be any.
Anybody.
Yes, because um, what happens, it could be classified, it could be a certificate, certificated. Last year we had administrators, this year we have administrators, we have counselors, we have teachers, just whoever wants to fill the role.
Okay.
Um, and so part of that role is um, offering the sick or providing the sixth lesson curriculum or making sure that it takes place at the middle school level. And then there's coordinators meetings that they have to attend. There's also student groups. Um, because the goal is for students to educate other students. So at lunchtime, they're preparing students to give presentations during tabling events at lunchtime, or if there's a back to school night or an open house, that students are actually um, doing the presentation. So my one goal in life um, is hopefully to get toupee students at each of our school sites to present on tobacco um, education because they are trained in that. Um, when they attend a field trip in January or February, that will then be followed up with our nurses doing a Narcan training um, for parents. And uh, so the students will be presenting on that. And then our nurses will be presenting on the Narcan. Uh, we've al- already had uh, Sematell County Office of Ed stating that they will give us uh, free Narcan to give out to parents should we do that presentation. And so I'm hoping to be able to do something like that in the spring, once we get our, our toupee coordinators and students up and running.
That's great. Uh, thank you for that extra information. And that's great news hearing about the lower rates. And I do think there's regulations that kind of shut down some of the advertising that was going out and social media stuff and everything. So anyway, that's great. And I'm sure a lot of the work that we're doing makes a difference. Um, so finally, I just want to say thank you Phoebe and Lisa. Thank you for your leadership with the nurses and for being here tonight. Um, really appreciate it. And the Patrini, I've so enjoyed working with you and thank you for your leadership in this district. You're really making a difference um, to the health and wellness of the staff and the students and the families. So really appreciate you. Yeah, good bet.
Thank you.
Yeah, I agree. Thank you, uh, Patrinia, Phoebe and Lisa for presenting tonight. And all the RNs and LVNs uh, really are making a difference. It's just such a strong reminder of how schools are kind of hubs in the community. And that just have this unique opportunity to be a keystone for community wellbeing. Uh, and so it's awesome to see. And again, also thank you Sequoia Healthcare District and our other funding partners too. Um, sounds like Redwood City Together is getting in on the game. Um, and the SB Hip Grant. Uh, it's really nice to see all this funding coming together to be able to address these needs. And of course, there's a ton of partners listed here. Um, that's awesome to see. We want, you want more, we want more uh, to be able to put them in there. But you know, to not recognize like, yeah, Vision to Learn coming in and screening and giving out classes. Stanford running their teen van and having medical students come and help to do health ed classes. Sunrisa's, um, hopefully Jerry Smiles starts, you know, really contributing in here. Um, the county office with their classes that they're putting in there. Um, El Cenzo a little bit hot. Um, you know, there's just so many partners, right? Like I, I don't know, I probably missed a bunch there. Um, one of the questions, I had two questions for you. Um, your goal is to use data and make necessary modification, use best practices to cultivate and expand the program. So wondering, could you, do you have an example of where, where that went into play?
So just with their dental program, looking at what we are doing preschool TK and Kinder, noticing that these issues are arising at such an early age. Then with the recommendation of our trustee, it just made sense to try to work at the next level. And so um, you know, just getting another partner on board, but making sure that Jerry Smiles is communicating with Sunrisa, hey, these are students that are having um, the active DK. So um, the, yeah, the active uh, DK. So just make sure that these students are being seen. And so then we can follow up to see, okay, these students, they had it in Kinder. Now at first grade, they were treated or they were prevented. So, or the students that didn't have the decay, now um, they continue, they will continue not to have the decay because of the season. So that's one of the measures we're using in order to um, improve our program.
Great. Yeah. Continuous learning, continuous improvement. I love it. Um, and then uh, I would like to think that we would do hearing in vision screening regardless of it being mandated by the state of California. But since it is mandated by the state of California, I was wondering, does it come with funding from the state of California?
Maybe, not to my knowledge. It's just one of those unfunded mandates.
Yeah, so probably uh, we just have to take it out of the grant funding, LC, general fund and yeah, okay. Yeah, that doesn't surprise me.
We do, we do bill, um, we do bill through SACE or LEA billing uh, when we do vision and hearing screening for IEPs. So that might come with a little bit of money.
Okay.
Yeah.
Yeah. I figured I'd ask, I mean. Yeah. Yeah, I kind of play, you know. Um, anyways, there was, there was, there are a lot of good, really good programs going on here. I, I appreciate seeing the staff wellness program as well. I think that that's, that's an important area for us to focus on. Um, I remember a couple of years ago, just, it almost felt like there was an enrollment, not like as enrollment crises with like immunizations, trying to make sure everybody got up, coming out of that. So it's really neat to see how that's like progressing and that partnership in there. Of course, the dental and vision screening, uh, and then the non punitive support classes for tobacco use instead of suspending students or pushing them out. There's just a lot, a lot good going on here. So thanks again for the hard work and for the presentation tonight.
Thank you.
Yeah, thank you so much for your presentation and just, there's so much going on. You guys are doing so much work. And I just really appreciate um, the support you're offering to our families, but also to our staff. Um. Patrini, I think you've, you've grown the health and wellness department a lot since you've been here. And I appreciate all the work that you've put into it. And it's been great working with you over the last few years. So um, I don't have any additional questions, so.
Thank you.
I don't have any questions either, but it's just the recognition, uh, Patrinia, since you've been with us and knowing what the program was prior to your time. Uh, it's, it's amazing to where we are right now. And thank you both Lisa and uh, Phoebe for all that you do and working closely with Patrinia to make sure that this is moving in the right direction. Um, and a great thank you to the Sequoia Healthcare District because Pamela, Pamela, you know, when she became CEO about the same time I became superintendent, we've been hand in hand all the way. And she doesn't, she always supports us, even if it's a little crazy. I have some money here I can give you, but she, she's great. She's a, she's a real supporter of the Redwood City School District. And out of those school districts, I think we get the most money, to be honest. Yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah. Yes. Um, but they are great supporters. So whenever they uh, need anything from us, we are always there to go to board meetings and to express our gratitude and give out any type of information that the board is looking for. And uh, it's, it's just been a wonderful partnership. And I know we were kind of iffy when it started back when, you know, when Jan was here. Do you remember?
It's evolved. I think we had to grow trust with each other.
Right.
Certainly, I think with Pamela and with you. And you know, anyway.
And it, it's worked out really well. So I thank all three of you for just being, you know, the heroes of moving this forward. Really appreciate it. And our kids do too. I'm, I'm really sure they do and their parents. But as, as, as Mr. Weekly was saying, we need to find a better way or another, not a better way, but another manner of how to really get some of our parents who are Latino parents who are hesitant or for whatever reason, don't want to go and get the services. And I know sometimes there's some suspicions around things, and especially if you're undocumented, where is information going to go and so forth? So it's something that uh, we can work on.
Can I say something just because right now we're talking about the Latino parents? Um, I've been attending a lot of the parent meetings where the Latino parents are there. And one of the things that they told us is it's better for them to actually get a phone call or the text rather than for us to think that they're looking at our website because they really don't. So that's one of the things that we heard from some of those parents. And so I had the feeling, but they confirmed it. So we want them to, we want them there, make the phone call or send the text that would send them to the link and give them a reminder because they really need that. And they expressed that, so.
And that's, that's one thing that we've been doing to get the amount of parents out that we need, like for last night.
And maybe we can do the, maybe I can do the cafecitos as well. Yeah, to connect with the parents.
Right, because I've got a list of all of them, you know, for the year. Yeah.
Great. Thank you so much. Appreciate that you're here too.
So discussion items, we have a slew of board policies to go over. Um, starting with Board Policy 5113, absences and excuses.
So thank you so much to Jenna and Lisa for really diving into our board policy committee recently. And we were able to actually bring quite a few to tonight. So I appreciate having you read them in advance. I know there's details in there and so forth. Um, but we have a variety tonight and we'll continue to bring more over the next uh, certainly two months and then regroup as uh, communities might be changing. But the first one is uh, regarding absences and excuses. I do recognize that the board policy is fairly short and then the administrative regs jump in. But I wanted to know if there were any uh, questions regarding this particular policy.
I had emailed in some comments, but you addressed them thoroughly in the email. So thank you.
Welcome.
Wendy, by any chance, do you want to address the questions so that everyone can be aware of it?
So we had um, a couple of questions about um, one, we had a formatting problem. So we addressed that. But uh, that was minor. The other one, let me pull it up so I can speak a little bit more eloquently about it. Um, so regarding the absences, this particular one, some minor changes regarding um, the previous uh, version, this current version that we're modifying erroneously moved um, the grade levels. Ed code states seventh through 12th grade in terms of notifying students in grades seven through 12, we had put seven through eight. So that was just a correction that we had to do uh, that shouldn't have been done in the first place. So minor, but important. And then also there was a recommendation um, to review the Power School platform that we use to track our attendances and determine um, for students that are on independent study legitimately and are, are taking advantage of that opportunities with their families for whatever their reasons are. We have learned um, and know that fa- the absences, the way it works for independent study is a, a child is um, marked as unexcused until the proper paperwork is returned. Because it's a, it's a comprehensive packet that goes home and all the parts need to be in there. So when the office manager receives it and notes it's complete and sends it to the teacher for grading, then they go back in and they mark excused. Because sometimes the packet doesn't come back and then it is truly unexcused. And so that has been the process. The problem with that is that our other great system of alerting of attendance and truacy, truancies notes, sends a note to the parent saying your child's now truant. So it's just, it's a mixed message that is, that needs to get worked out. So we're, we're researching on how to do that. So that was a recommendation. That was, that was great. Um, and then there was also a reminder about independent study that Ed Code states that in actuality, it, the minimum is three consecutive days in a row. Our board policy also says up to 20. So that's the range in which independent study. I know that's a little bit of a sidestep for excuses and absences, but related to the absence. So those were the comments that were made.
Anything else? Okay. Uh, 7.2 for sharing discussion of board policy 514, 5.6, parent guardian notification.
Yes. Uh, so once again, um, there were just some minor updates on this particular policy and we did have a couple of uh, question, one question came in. Uh, that was answered actually by our Director of Communications Jorge Quintana regarding um, when a, when parents when parents are not necessarily proficient in either language or, or a language necessarily, how um, the district is supporting communication out. And so Jorge responded to that um, request about um, the different versions of, of how parents receive information, including most recently a podcast. That one happens to be in Spanish for, for individuals that are not reading. And so that, that's another um, item that was added. Did you want to add anything, Trustee Weekly or?
Yeah, just um, I, I think it's great, the um, degree to which we work to accommodate English and Spanish speaking parents in, in the district. Um, and it seems like we are entering now an era with uh, commodity tools that may make it easier and easier for us to support uh, so-called long tail languages, um, because we have many uh, non either English or Spanish speaking parents who are in the district. And being able to not just communicate out to them, but also receive information from them would be really advantageous for maximizing the inclusivity of the district. And so I, I would love just over the coming years to see us uh, adopt such tools for both outbound communication as well as solicitation of information from parents. Just given that that's getting easier and easier to do.
Agree. I, I do know we have board policy that says there's a minimum of 15% in which we're required. But I think this was a, a sort of an out of the box idea of how we can get ahead of it with the technology tools that now exist. So for example, Dr. Baker's newsletter is one example where you can toggle to translate. But those are limited. Now, the good news is that Jorge is pretty on top of managing those numbers. And so he recently noted that Arabic is a language that's emerging more in our district and so added that feature. So there's been progress made. I just, I think for this one idea, um, you know, that was really interesting for us to explore because maybe it's even out there and we haven't really delved into that yet. So thank you for the suggestion for that.
Thank you.
Any other additional questions regarding parent guardian notifications?
Okay. You can go on to 7.3, Board Policy 6000 Concepts and Roles.
Any questions on this particular one?
Yeah, that's 7.4, Board Policy 4033, Lactation Accommodation.
Yes. So this is a new law that um, emerged in July. And so we did have board policy, as you, as you know, this is an update. But it does uh, require the district, one, in regards to notifying employees when they note they will be out on maternity leave to state, we have this policy. So we've made that changes in our internal forms. But also then when the employee notes that they would like to take advantage of a lactation room, that we have the space with all of the required elements and the time within the day. And so we've already experienced some occurrences this year, which is great. And, and, and all of our employees have been supported. So not too much of a larger reach. It just, you know, we wanted to make sure our processes and our routines were in place when we are aware that somebody is out and then come back and need those services. So sometimes managing substitutes coming into cover and so forth. So that's been new, but it's been working. That's good. Any other, any questions about this particular lactation policy?
Nope. Okay. Okay. Our last one, seven point five, Board Policy 1113, District and School Websites.
Yes. So the biggest change was really about the directory information. Are there any questions regarding this particular one?
No, but thank you, Policy Committee, for doing the updates and running through it, you know. These are all just kind of updates to existing policies. It looks like just catching up on ed code and like tightening up language. So thanks. Appreciate it. Yeah.
Very thankful. Yes.
Yeah.
Bring, bring, bring as many batches as you can get done. Yeah, I will appreciate it. Yeah, no doubt.
I'll be sending those to you Friday to review for our upcoming meetings. So.
Thank you, Wendy.
Yes, thank you.
Okay, that brings us to our consent items. Do you have a motion to approve?
So moved.
Seconded.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Thank you. We have no action items, so reports from board members and superintendent. Who would like to start?
We just, we had a Board Policy Committee meeting, obviously. I think that's about it for me this week.
I visited Garfield last, not last, this past Friday, but the Friday before. It was nice. Yeah, Principal Shackle on Friday morning, I don't know, maybe every morning, but Friday morning I met her at the gate. She's welcoming all the students as they come in. Everybody gets a handshake, a fist bump, a hug, something like a greeting. Then went in and had an assembly. A lot of the parents stick around for the assembly. And his kids recognize his greater gators, the parents that are there taking pictures of their kids. So it was, it was a nice, really nice community kind of thing. Of course, we visited some classrooms. We got into both the SLCs. The, the older SLCs, they have chores around campus. So they get to go and go and like clean up and stuff. So that was neat to see them sort of transition into their chore time. Lots of bonus instructions going on in the, you know, in the classrooms. Principal Shackle was talking about, there's a real focus on third grade reading, that that's sort of what their data said they need to do this year. So that's cool. And it's just, yeah, there's, you know, it's a school that's really focused on community and high quality tier one instruction. So it was a good visit. And then earlier tonight, Anna presented, did the budget presentation for the Kennedy Middle School School Site Council. So I was there. We didn't, we didn't get too much feedback about what they wanted as their priorities from this meeting. So hopefully they'll come back and fill it out in the survey. But Principal Chandra mentioned from the Cafecitos that the mental health counselors was a top one from that conversation there. So just thought I'd share that.
Cecilia or David?
So one thing that Alyssa forgot was the Redwood City 20 together meeting, budget committee meeting. Cause I was like, I, I had to go back. I'm like, there's been so many budget committee meeting, Delac at Garfield. And again, we had some parents, that was a small group of parents, but still at least five schools were represented. So that was good. And then we talked about the budget as well. And then last night at Hoover, also to talk about the budget.
You know, just real quick, I want to put in a plug for Redwood City Together because I will be circling off. So again, one of the other three of you or two of you, someone should go on there with Cecilia. I'm assuming Cecilia will keep it. That is a really great collaborative and we meet every other month about quarterly. I don't know. Anyway, anyway, but again, that's where a lot of our partners and collaborators are. And at the last meeting, we had a really good conversation and highlighted some ways that we could work even more together. And a lot of them around health and wellness and how they can support our academics. So again, that's another great place to plug in. And I do also want to just put a shout in for Dr. Baker because you have spent a lot of time with that group. You were the lead last year. And then I know you continue to really help them with how that group can support our school district. So it is a really important group. There's a lot of resources there, brain resources as well as money resources. So we really need to foster that group. So that's just a plug that one of you should think about it and it's a great group. I, I've really enjoyed being on it all these years.
And thank you, Dr. Baker. You've been such an amazing resource to that group. And I do think it helps our school district.
I think so too. And we've got a really good, Dr. Viacorta, who is now at Kaiser. And he's the one that represents Kaiser. And he wasn't there this, this last week when we met. But at the executive meeting that he attends with me, he did bring to the table, how can he and his team come to our Latino families? When their meetings were having, whether it be ELAC, whether it be DILAC, whether it be Cafecitos, because there is a high rate colorectal cancer that's becoming quite extreme in the Latino community. And so he wants to get the word out and the different types of testing that one can, can have. And so I said, I can definitely put together the Cafecitos for you. If you want to get your team out here, we'll get Michelle Ramon and we'll get the community school coordinators to push it. But it, it, it's a way to really collaborate in items that we need. And we're talking about the health pieces for our students. Kaiser, you know, if you don't have insurance, all we have to do is let them know now, Stacy said, and, and they will get it. And so that was brought from, Stacy said this at the last meeting.
They're providing healthcare for.
They are, Kaiser now is, well, they'll, they'll help you get the healthcare through Obamacare or whatever. But if, if you cannot get it for whatever reason, they will still be your healthcare provider. It's pretty amazing. And so again, it just remind, like, there was a lot of stuff that happened this last week at that meeting, last, last week at the meeting. That was like, oh my gosh, there's even more ways to capitalize, capitalize on this collaborative. So yeah, that was another thing that came up. So yeah, we can, we should probably plug Patrina in with, well, yeah.
I already talked.
Great. Okay, good. Sorry. All right. Enough brainstorming. Sorry.
My only things to report would be the Board Policy Meeting and the Budget Renewal Initiatives. We met. And then we're actually having our second meeting again tomorrow.
Yes.
Do you have anything else?
You know, the budget meeting last night was at Orion's Site Council meeting today to go over the budget. Great group of people, not only the council itself, but it also had a, a large group online. So they let me have an hour and 15 minutes. So it's good.
Okay. Quarterly Williams Report. Any questions? Eleven point two, Information on San Mateo County Investment Fund. Questions? Eleven point three, Review of Connected Community Charter Schools Unaudited Actuals for 2324. Comments, questions? Nope. All right. Eleven point four, Review of KIPS Unaudited Actuals for 2324. And Review of Rocket Ships Unaudited Actuals.
Other than, yeah.
Rick, thank you to you and your team for all those reviews. I, I really do appreciate what you're doing and it's nice to, I mean, it helps us to read those letters in terms of how they're doing. Thank you.
Yeah, there. Eleven point six, Review of HR's Hiring Season.
I don't have any questions, but I do have a comment. I really like the format that you guys are using this time around. I think is really neat. So thank you so much. Please understand.
Thank you. That was Dr. Baker's idea. It said, formal presentation or information? So this was a new way of doing it and it was nice because it was, it was a different way to process it. Thank you for that feedback.
Yeah, and I, my only comment too is that it's just, it's neat. It was a good presentation. Thanks for putting that together. And if we, you know, if we're going to continue staffing with the international staff, which we probably are going to find that we need to, it's kind of good to see the learnings coming in and, you know, and, and really continue to, you know, use those learnings to find high quality staff for our students. That's great. Thank you.
Yeah, thank you very much. I appreciated getting the information. The, the one question or just sort of comment I had, or maybe you can speak to it, is do you think there's more opportunities for us through internships and that sort of thing? And then I was trying to remember, did you ever follow up with the Reach University? That was, you did, okay. And we're not doing anything with them. That wasn't a good fed or?
You know, yeah, so they had various, there was payments that had to be made and there was some other areas to that. You know, it's interesting with internships because a teacher needs to complete a certain percent of classes before they're eligible to be an intern. And those fall under ineffective teachers in the CT, unfortunately. However, it is a way to build and, and we are a big proponent. We have many relationships with our universities for student teachers and interns. The other part we run into is sometimes an intern needs two different experiences for their credentials. So they may start with us in the fall. But they can't be an intern and then leave us halfway. So that's a little bit of an odd scenario. But overall, we're, we have about 30 agreements with universities. It's just where people are placed and their proximity to their home and so forth. One, the universities that we really enjoy partnering with is San Jose State and San Francisco State. They're local. They also have bilingual programs, but Alder is turning out to be a lot more successful. There is relatively new to us over the last five years. And that was a partnership through San Mateo County Office of Ed to help with special ed, but they've branched into middle school and bilingual. So we've just started adding our first bilingual teacher this year as a resident. And that actually is the best type of version because you, the person is in the classroom every single day with a master teacher, literally co-teaching. Learning about R CSD initiatives and methods and platforms and so forth, instructional strategies, the focus of the school, attend staff meetings right there with that master teacher all year long. And then they're ready for year two. So that's a program, I think, is, has been the highlight. But anyway.
So, so it sounds like we're capitalizing on these programs where we can, where we have the capacity or where there's
And the fit.
And the fit. Okay.
Right, definitely.
All right, thanks.
I like the exploratory and iterative style where we're trying to see what works. We tried some new things this year. Not everything was a total slam dunk. But then we learn from that, we iterate and we try making some changes next year and see how that works out.
Absolutely. A, a little bit of a, a, a learning lesson, certainly with our international staff, which was a trial, right? We got essentially a hundred percent fill rate of our vacancies for our credentialed staff and almost that for our paraeducators. However, you know, the flip side to that is all the learning that we discovered that's needed. So similar to a newer teacher, even though we have experience coming in, the transition is very different. The IEP process is totally different. So you have a, a teacher that understands children, but just has to learn something brand new and doesn't, isn't necessarily afforded the time to do that. So we could sort of backwards map that a little bit better. And we really mean starting that process in January. Meanwhile, our, still our focus is local, right? That, that, that's very helpful as well and our interns and so forth. So we, I've been talking quite a bit with Anna and the special ed team about just staff developments and supports and different ways we can be looking at it. I think also a new avenue of the way we're interviewing, we took another look at that, I mentioned, with simulations and videos to review and more case studies. So we get a better sense of the training that will be needed and then be setting that up. So, you know, those were some of our learning lessons. I still like the program. I still want to do it. I think it's worthy. Still far less expensive than contractors, but it does come at a separate price. And so we're trying to figure out bandwidth and how we can manage that.
And to some degree, you know, it wasn't all the entity's fault that, you know, brought us the teachers from the Philippines. There were problems with their visas that it happened at the consulate in the Philippines. And they had a date that they were going to meet and all of a sudden they changed their date and it was months later. And so it allowed a backlog before they could even get here and have the training that you had, everybody had planned for them, right?
Yes, that is true. We did have some snappus with the visas. Yes.
I may have a contact at State Department if we want to kind of knock on some doors early with the embassy in Manila.
Yep, let us know.
That'd be great. I'll reach out to you about that. That'd be great. Thank you.
Get them the door right away.
Thank you very much for that report. It was really helpful to, to read through.
You're welcome.
Correspondents. Yeah.
There, there was an email asking for more support from payroll that I received.
And Wendy, Wendy followed up on that one. So, yeah. Okay, other business suggested items for the future agendas?
Just that to remind you that we have a study session next week, next week from six to eight.
Six days.
Yeah.
Here.
Here. I think the boardroom will be decorated.
It might be decorated.
Because there is, there is a big festival going on the next day. Evelyn puts it, Evelyn, Evelyn and her crew.
Yeah, shout out to Sarah, Jocelyn, Amber, Veronica Ramirez. We all kind of gather to put up a Halloween potluck. Yeah.
There's no changes to the board meeting calendar?
Sorry.
No changes to the board meeting.
No, not this time.
Okay. Do we have a motion to adjourn?
I move we adjourn. I'll second.
All those in favor? Thank you.